Good evening. A great crowd tonight. Welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. If you'll all please rise for the invocation. Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Tim Clark. He's a worship pastor for Celebration Church, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Let's pray. Father, we just commit this meeting that we have tonight to you. Lord, I ask for wisdom, I ask for understanding what your will would be, and Lord, I pray that you give us a greater fear and reverence of you. And Lord, in all the business and all the things that have to take place tonight, Lord, let us honor you in the decisions and the things that we make tonight. And Lord, we pray that, we pray it all in the name of Jesus tonight. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under your God, in your visual, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you Reverend Clark. Nice to meet you. Okay, first item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting, the work session, and the agenda meetings which were held on October the 24th, and also the minutes of the city council organizational meeting which was held on November the 7th. Council members, do you have any additions, deletions, or changes to make to those minutes?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as written. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Mayor Wilson, you report.
Thank you. Do I need to, I'm so used to going down there, I just can't.
Absolutely. Go right ahead.
You know, I mean, I'll do it from here, but I'm gonna go down there when Cory gets up. But I just, I want to say, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the council and our citizens. It is something I look forward to as we start our work together in Fair Hope. I recognize that the council and the mayor's offices are two separate and equal branches of our city government that must work together to fulfill our oath to the citizens of Fair Hope. We operate under a code of ordinances that sometimes can be confusing, and it's very confusing, just letting you know, it's very confusing, even contradictory. I am new, and I'm learning, and I appreciate your patience. But if I do ask for time to look into something or to study something, it really is not because of anything but wanting to make the right decision for the citizens. And I think we have a bright future, I know we have a bright future, and I look forward to working with the council over the next four years, and for all the citizens. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.[194.12][194.12](Applause). I believe you have, at least, you have one presentation.
I first want to say that Cory Young and I have known each other a very long time, 27 years. This is an amazing woman, and I look up to you, and you're really are. We make this proud. And I wanted to give you this certificate of appreciation, but I also wanted to let everybody know that if I did read all this, because she has done so much, you're not gonna like me. I just want you, I'm gonna do the highlights. The list of accomplishments achieved under her leadership is long, but I'm gonna do the highlights. One is, of course, the Fair Hope Educational and Enrichment Foundation, which is huge. She has worked to contribute more than $140,000 annually to the Fair Hope schools. I mean, that's incredible. Those dollars enrich the lives of thousands of Fair Hope students in the way of hands-on art, music, technology, and engineering initiatives. FEE also provides tutoring for at-risk students in our community, which is also huge. Cory, thank you for all you have done to make Fair Hope an amazing place to live. Your services are greatly appreciated.
Okay, next, Mayor, you're still up. We have a presentation to be made. Jennifer?
Yeah, I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of the trip that we, I took to Canada, and Ms. Jo Hogan was able to go with me. Jo, will you come up? Just come on up if you don't mind. And, um, help me do this. I just wanted to tell you all a little bit about the Communities in Bloom program. It was because we won the national competition back in 2015, it made us eligible to go to the international and compete internationally in the Communities in Bloom competition. The Communities in Bloom competition, we had two international judges that some of you were able to meet. One was from Canada, and one was from the Netherlands. Do you remember Piet and Mr. Boone? But we, they came here and they looked at six or seven different criteria. They were looking at our floral displays, our landscaped areas, our environmental efforts, our heritage preservation, our tidiness, and overall impression. We, when we went to the competition, they paired us with five other communities. They paired us in a large group. And so, we arrived in Canada, and during the competition, there was a, actually a flag exchange ceremony. So, we were asked to bring a flag from the City of Fair Hope, and, yes, our city seal flag.
Make sure that was still there.
And it is still there. We just, but during the ceremony, they exchanged, we exchanged flags with Saskatchewan. And I sent greetings on behalf of the citizens and of the City of Fair Hope to Saskatchewan, Canada. And in exchange, they gave this flag. And I was gonna ask Eddie and Jo if y'all helped me put the flag up, so we can, everybody can see the flag. And so, this is their flag. And if y'all turn it around so the city council can see it. But this was interesting. I'd never been able to send greetings on behalf of the citizens of Fair Hope, but they sent this flag for us, and I promised that I would show you guys and present it to the mayor and city council at the next city council meeting. So that's what I'm doing. Mayor Wilson?
Mayor, would you accept that on behalf of the city, please?
Absolutely.[488.41][488.41](Laughter). Is Kelly still here?
Not right now.
Okay. No.[494.69][494.69](Laughter). I think you can help me do something. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I would, I wanted to make sure that, I told y'all how we scored. So, they have a scoring competition where there's five bloom silver, which is anywhere between 86.5 to 89.9, and we scored 87.25. So, we got this five bloom silver, you know, designation. The group that won also had a five bloom silver designation, meaning we were within two points, or maybe even a half a point, from the winner of the international competition in our category. We did receive honorable mention in the, so basically, second place, and they did recognize us for our year-round floral displays. Our year-round floral displays is somewhat kind of odd, just because a lot of these communities that we were competing against are in Canada, or they were in Italy, or places where it's snowing, or it's very cold, and so they're not able to utilize flowers in the wintertime. So, we changed, one of the things that I did when I was there was did a speech on our year-round floral displays, and just what we do here in Fair Hope. It was a 20-minute presentation, and we talked about how we celebrate every season with flowers. And it's something that, you know, we are proud of here in Fair Hope, and I have to say, when the competition heard the presentation, and you can ask Jo, they said, "How are we gonna beat them?" You know? They were surprised that, you know, we came in second, I think. I think they, I heard them behind us. But, but we should be really proud, because we do celebrate every season with our floral displays, and it is, we are recognized internationally. So, thank you.[629.54][629.54](Applause). And a big thanks to Jo Hogan, who's a volunteer in our tree committee, was able to go with us, and she serves as president of the Fair Hope Garden Club, and I really am thankful that she was able to come.[643.41][643.41](Applause).
Thank you, Jo and Jennifer. Next item is public participation pertaining to agenda items only. If you would like to address the council concerning items five through 16 on the agenda, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing no one, I will now close public participation on agenda items. You will have another opportunity following the agenda items to address the council on any item of your concern, and we'll move on to council comments. Councilman Robinson.
Well, I'd just like to say, this is the first time we've all sat up here together as councilmen and new mayor, and I'd just like to say again, I look forward to working together with all of you in operating this city in a, in a, in a good and reasonable manner. Working together doesn't mean agreeing on everything, but, but I think we've got a good group that will be fair and respectful of each other, and always take those opinions into consideration in making decisions, and I look forward to the next four years.
Thank you, Councilman Robinson. Welcome, Councilman Conyers.
Thank you. I just wanted to say how much my family appreciates the support from the mayor, the council, the employees, and the citizens of Fair Hope. We really appreciate the outpouring of love and support following the tragic loss of our brother-in-law, and just want to say thank you for that, and very glad to be here tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Brown?
There again, looking forward to working with everybody, looking forward to the holiday season starting this weekend.
Thursday night, huh? Okay. Councilman Boone?
Actually, I was gonna make a joke and try not to advertise a lot of the trees this year.[769.82][769.82](Laughter). We had so much fun last year with everybody showing up, but I would like to see everybody out there, because it is such a wonderful event. And, but shh, keep it real quiet. Thank y'all.
No pushing.[782.63][782.63](Laughter). Some of y'all got that one. Okay, for my comments, I have a couple, or several people that I'd like to recognize tonight, some special attendees of tonight's meeting, and that would be PAC 47, our local Cub Scout PAC. They are led by Mr. Sean Sullivan, and I will call out their names, those that I have the names of. I hope that we have all of them. There's Ian Sullivan, Michael Brantley, Spencer Davis, James Suddeth, Braden French, Gabe Hunter, David Kinney, and Sam Curran. Would you all stand up for the crowd, please, and be recognized?[831.13][831.13](Applause). Would you bring your, come on up to the podium. Yes, sir. Who was left out, Mr. Sullivan?
We, I failed to list Ian Patton and Dominic Clark, and Nathan, Nathan, did you get mentioned? Nathan Franklin as well.
Okay. Thank you.[852.44][852.44](Applause).
And Mr. Burrell, if you don't mind, we have one, the den has one question they would like to ask that any one council member would be able to answer.
Sure.
Do you know what it is? Remember what it is? Come on, sir, I want you to remember what it is? What is the biggest challenge facing our community?
We're gonna have Councilman Robinson answer that question.[883.82][883.82](Laughter).
I'm sorry, what was that question? Lighting of the, attendance at lighting of the trees, I think, is probably the foremost thing on our minds right now. It's probably a good, good way to look at it.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilman Burrell, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Well, I would like to invite one of you Cub Scouts up here to help me with this next, to introduce this next, come on, you raise your hand. Yes, sir, come on. Tell the, tell the audience what your name is.
Gabe Hunter.
Okay, Gabe. All right, Gabe, we are going to have to recognize some award winners from the recycling committee, and so I would like for you to ask, is Nancy here? Okay, ask, say, I would like to invite Nancy Anderson to the podium.
I would like to invite Nancy Anderson to the podium.
Okay, and she is going to give us an update on the America Recycles Day Art Project Contest. Say she is going to, she is going to give us an update on the America Recycles Day Art Project Contest.
She's going to give us an update on the America Recycles Day Art Project Contest.
Perfect. Perfect, Gabe, perfect. Good job, man.[978.13][978.13](Applause).
And thank you very much. Mr. Robinson is our new recycle council liaison, so we're gonna be putting him to work soon. And Mr. Sullivan has been communicating with me here recently about his guys that are gonna be coming and helping when we have some recycle events coming up. And one of those events is actually tomorrow, America Recycles Day will be having some activities down at the Pecan Street Annex Building. And you just turn on Pecan Street, and you will find that it's at the end of the road, 451 Pecan Street, but we will have, the recycle committee will have a tent there to offer information, answer questions. The shredder truck will be there, so if you have income tax records and things that have, have met their lifespan, and you're ready to get rid of them, that's the time to bring them down. We will have them there. The truck will be there from 10 to 2, but we will be there from 8 to 4. And then, this to encourage the students to learn about recycling, we have had an art contest with the Marietta Johnson Organic School, the Fair Hope Intermediate School, and the J. Larry Newton School, all fourth graders. And when you go out in the lobby, that's what all of those little displays are. Those are all of the entries, and they will also be on display tomorrow at the, down at the Pecan Street Annex. And of those from the, we didn't have any entries from the organic school, so they didn't lose out on anything, but we just didn't have any entries. They have very few fourth grade students. The first-place winner for Fair Hope Intermediate School is Bryce Booth, and it's my understanding he, he's, and his classmates are on a three-day field trip, so he couldn't be here tonight. Honorable mention for the Fair Hope Intermediate School are Anna Camille, Arendt, Sarah Della Huntie, Sidney Gray, and Amelia Bates. First place for J. Larry Newton School is Brooklyn Norris. Honorable mention, Carter Nist and Anna Clanton. And the winners will receive prizes and have photos at their schools on Wednesday. But I wanted to tell each of the students, I do have pictures I made today, so get your picture of your entry before you leave tonight. See me for that, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy.[1148.13][1148.13](Applause). With that, I will close council comments, and we will move on to item five on the agenda, which is a resolution that the city council approves the selection of Matthew McDonald with Jones Walker LLP for professional legal services for the review of pending litigation and authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson, and we changed this in the work session, council, to negotiate the fee schedule between the City of Fair Hope and Matthew C. McDonald. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of this selection.
I make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second approving the selection of Matthew McDonald to review the pending litigation. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay. Resolution is approved. Thank you. Item number six is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute change order number one to project PW 013-16 or emergency repairs to this civic center. Brick collapsed with a deduction from the contract in the amount of $45.50, and award the change order to Youngblood Barrett Construction and Engineering. The scope of work will be modified to exclude painting over the brick finish, which resulted in a monetary deduction change to the contract. Somebody like to entertain a motion to pass this resolution?
I make a motion, we pass the resolution.
So I have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council, you won't see these very often, deduction in the contract amount. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay. Contract amount is amended. Thank you. Item number seven is a resolution extending the budget for the fiscal year through December 22nd, 2016, to allow invoices and expenditures to continue as needed.
Make your motion, we approve the resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to extend the budget for the fiscal year through December 22nd, 2016. I would just like to add that, you know, I do, I do believe we should receive Mayor Wilson's budget recommendations very soon, and, you know, this will allow the operation of the city to continue at least until December 22nd, or if the budget is approved prior to that, that would not be necessary, so. Deborah, anything that you want to add to that? Did I cover it? Okay. Any further discussion? Any comments? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of extending the budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay. Thank you, council. Item number eight is a resolution that the City of Fair Hope votes to purchase the Kronos Timekeeping System Maintenance Annual Renewal for December 6, 2016 to December 2017 for the IT Department. The type of maintenance renewal needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing bid list, therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The cost will be $16,982.34. I'll entertain a motion for this, pass this resolution?
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to purchase the maintenance renewal for the Kronos Timekeeping System. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Item number nine is a, we get that, Clark? Okay. Item number nine is a resolution that the city council hereby approves and authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute the attached resolution for the state of Alabama acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation regarding the construction and maintenance items for project number STPOA-0042 for adaptive signal installation along State Road 42, also known as US Highway 98 in Baldwin County. This is to encompass 28 intersections. The Alabama Department of Transportation is now, or may later be, desirous of receiving federal aid for improvement of said highway. The traffic signal layouts, diagrams, and typical sections as submitted to the city are now on file in the office of the city clerk. I will just preface a motion by saying that this is the project of the Eastern Shore Metropolitan Planning Organization, all of the metropolitan areas, our cities, Daphne, Spanish Fork, Fair Hope, and Locksley are required to vote for approval of this. The money will come from the MPO. The maintenance agreement has been approved prior. There's a maintenance agreement that would cost somewhere in the neighborhood of $10,000 to $15,000 a year. I believe that agreement has been signed with Southern Light for the fiber optic maintenance, so that would be the cost to the city for this adaptive signaling, also known as SMART. It's a smart system that's supposed to adjust with the traffic, and rather than increase road capacity, the traffic capacity is increased through this SMART system that adapts and learns as the traffic patterns change. I think I've sufficiently described this, and now I will entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second approving the mayor to execute the attached resolution. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay. You are approved, Mayor. Thank you, council. Item number 10 is a resolution that the city council hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to pay off the Utilities Revenue Warrant Series 2009 in a principal amount of $510,000. Ms. Smith, can I have you come to the podium and describe this? This was the only warrant that could be retired this year. There is another way that we could pay off some additional debt, but this by far and away had the highest interest rate of any of the debt that we could pay off, and this would retire all of this amount, all the amount owed on this warrant. I will say that we have $125,000 in reserves held by the issuing agent. We did have a regularly scheduled payment that was scheduled to be paid in December 1st, and if you take what was held in reserves by the bond issuer, and that which was scheduled to be paid, the additional amount owed by the city would be $265,000. Is that correct?
Approximately, yes.
Approximately $265,000, so you can strike one more off the books. You want to add to that?
This is a water and sewer debt, so the $265,000 will be paid out of a water fund.
Okay. Is that doable?
We'll make it work.
Okay. Any questions for Deborah? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve this.
I make a motion, we approve it, pay off the debt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay off the URW Series 2009. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay. Thank you, council. Item number 11 is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract with SEA Entertainment Booking Agency for the band known as B Street Benny for the New Year's Eve Downtown Celebration, with a cost not to exceed $5,000. I'll entertain a motion, pass this resolution?
I do have one question on the, the date, and I know it's got December 31st, 2019.
Ooh, that is in the future. Yes. Very astute there, Councilman Conyers. AKA old Tyless Conyers. Should be 2016. You like that, didn't you?
Unless we want to get ahead of ourselves.
You like that, didn't you?[1671.83][1671.83](Laughter). Okay, with that correction, Ms. Sullivan, anything you want to add to that? Okay, $5,000 gonna cover, it says not to exceed. Not gonna come in at 1,500, is it?[1684.13][1684.13](Laughter). Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Authorizing the mayor to execute this contract?
So moved.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? What type of music do they play?
(Inaudible). (Inaudible).
Okay. Okay. All right. All right, we have a motion and a second barring no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you, council. Item number 12 is a resolution from the Fair Hope Airport Authority authorizing Mayor Wilson and the Fair Hope Airport Authority/City of Fair Hope to make applications for airport improvement funding assistance from the State of Alabama Department of Transportation for the purpose of undertaking a project to make improvements at the H.L. Sunny Callahan Airport. Jo, do you want to speak? Would you come to the podium and describe this? If Pam is here, she can pitch in. I will say what I can. I first and foremost want to say that this does not subject the City of Fair Hope to any financial obligations. It's a $2.3 million, thereabouts, grant application to the FAA. The State of Alabama is required to pitch in 5%. I believe that was $125,000, and the Airport Authority is required to pitch in 5%, which would be $125,000. Some of the highlights of that is that there is $300,000 requested of this grant to go towards paying for land on the east side, which would ultimately go to paying off the airport's debt.
Yes. Yes, Jack, this is, as you said, this is just a application. We actually have to apply before... We actually have to apply before, in the middle of November, to actually have a chance to get the money. This is discretionary FAA money. We'll put our name in the hat, and then we'll know probably in the July, August timeframe whether we get this money, but this will be phase three of the project that we've got, that we're working on now on the east side of the airport.
Why don't you describe for the council a little bit what this phase three would entail?
Okay, phase two, which we started about a month ago, is moving a lot of dirt and putting, and doing all the drainage to basically put 11 more acres of hangars and taxiway access on the east side. And when we finish phase two, we'll have two inches of asphalt on pretty much all of the east side. Phase three, which is this project, will basically finish all the drainage, will basically put six inches of asphalt, will tie the asphalt, tie the new hangar facilities into the taxiway, and build another road from 32 into the airport. So at that point in time, after phase three, we'll be ready for a general aviation terminal, and we'll be in a position to compete for new hangar spaces on the east side. So this is the last phase, if you will, of about a five-year project.
Any questions for Mr. McInerney? Okay, I'll entertain a motion authorizing the mayor to sign this application.
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second authorizing the mayor to sign this application. Any final discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Good luck.
Council president, I need to recuse myself on this next item.
Okay, okay, thank you. Item number 13 is a site plan review at the request of Brian Britt of Britt Properties LLC for the approval of 455 Magnolia Avenue. This is a proposed mixed-use, three-story building located on the north side of Magnolia Avenue between Bancroft Street and School Street.
Mayor and council, as you mentioned, this is a site plan review. It has been submitted and approved by the planning commission. It's on the north side of Magnolia between Bancroft and School. The parcel is approximately 9,200 square feet. The applicant proposes a building of 4,530 square feet, three-story, which is going to be the first two stories will be commercial with residential above. It was approved unanimously by the planning commission. There were a couple of comments about landscaping, and I believe they have been addressed, or I was told today they've been addressed. So there are no comments or concerns from a planning perspective on this project.
Questions for Eric, council?
I believe the applicant, yeah, the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Applicant is here if you have questions for the applicant. I do notice 46.2% of the area will be pervious paving.
Correct. Also, as with the mixed use, with the residential, you're required to put parking for your residences, for your residents onsite. They will have onsite parking for the residents, the rest of it will be street parking for the business, as is the usual in the downtown area.
Okay, excellent. Any questions, council? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the site plan.
So moved.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the site plan review approval. Any final discussion? We were asked on the radio this morning, Jimmy, if what the building height would be. It is confirmed, that is 35 feet, which is not any variance from our ordinances, within what's specified. Okay, have a motion and a second barring no final discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, site plan is approved, thank you council. Item number 14 is a site plan extension request of Robert Cummings with Hutchison, Moore &amp; Rouse, acting as the authorized agent for Noel Park Flats LLC requesting a 180-day extension of the site plan approval that was granted for the property located at the southwest corner of Fairhope Avenue and South Bayview Street.
Yes, sir, as you mentioned, this was approved, I believe it was in, the planning commission notes are minutes state December 7th of 2015. They have not proceeded with this project yet. I spoke to Mr. Cummings today. They are working on engineering in order to build this. This is the kind of irregular-shaped parcel that is directly to the west of Mr. Bob Callahan's office there on, off of, I believe it's Bayview. There's a lot of engineering because they're going to be building on that gully side, and the engineering in the retaining wall on that gully, they said, has been challenging from a design standpoint. So they're asking for an extension of their approval so that they can continue on and come up with a suitable solution for that issue.
And what happens if it's not granted, if the 180 days is not granted, they have to go back to the entire process again?
I believe so, yes.
I would also note that that was approved by city council following that.
That is correct. It's been approved by the planning commission and the city council. They are, if they do not get a building permit within, I believe it's 300, within one year, then the site plan approval goes away, and they would have to go back to the planning commission and start all over again. So they're asking for an extension on that for an additional six months.
And I believe this one also had some component of trying to extend into city right-of-way some for landscaping purposes.
There was, yes.
Sidewalk landscaping.
That is correct.
All right, any questions for Eric before I ask for a motion? Okay, does somebody like to make a motion granting the request of the 180-day extension?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to grant the request, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to grant a 180-day extension. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of granting the extension, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Extension is granted, thank you council. Item 15 is also a site plan extension request of Pete Sikoros, Sikorowski, did I get that right? I am so sorry. With Dream Tech Design Services requesting a 180-day extension of the site plan approval that was granted for the property located at 406 Oak Street.
Yes, sir, this again is a request for an extension of a site plan. The site plan was originally approved, let me go back. I believe this is, you're going to have to forgive me, I did not, I talked to Jonathan about this. I believe this is the second extension?
It is.
It is the second extension of it. I spoke to Mr. Sikorowski today, and I believe, is he here? He is here. There's some, they're working on, there were some changes in the investment and development team, and he had, they're requesting an additional 180 days because of the delays going into the holidays and then coming back and producing design and construction documents, and, you know, they're feeling an extra 180 days is what's going to be needed in order to proceed with the development.
Counsel, any questions for Eric before I ask for a motion? Okay, hearing no questions for Eric, I will ask if you'd like to make a motion to grant this extension?
So moved.
We have a motion to grant the extension, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to grant the extension. I have one question, Eric, do you see any reason to deny this extension?
I do not, and in speaking with Jonathan, there was no, you know, the ordinance allows you to extend up to 180 days. It does not tell you that you can only have one or two extensions. It says you may extend up to 180 days at your discretion. To his knowledge, there was no reason not to.
Any final discussion? Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of granting this extension, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, extension is granted, thank you council. Item number 16 is an application for a nonprofit tax-exempt license, also known as an alcoholic beverage license by the Baldwin County Humane Society for the 2016 Christmas by the Bay located at 161 North Section Street, Fairhope, Alabama. That sounds familiar. This will be held on December the 1st, 2016, from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM. All the paperwork in order, chief?
Yes, it is.
As they reminded me at the last meeting in your absence, that you wouldn't sign it if it wasn't in order, so maybe shouldn't have to ask. I'll entertain a motion to approve this alcoholic beverage license?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I want to appreciate, I appreciate the Baldwin County Humane Society doing what they do. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the application, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Application is approved, thank you council. Item 17, public participation. If you have anything else to bring forth before the council, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Trey Cordy, 101 Spring Park Drive, Fairhope. I just have a question. Last time I attended a city council meeting, y'all had held over the discussion and voting on the moratorium for residential development. Just wanted to see if that's, any updates on that, since it was not on the agenda tonight?
Yeah, it was discussed at long length in the work session. I don't see a time at which it may be put on the agenda. It may or may not be put on the agenda. We may call a special meeting on that, but no action obviously will be taken tonight, and I doubt very seriously that any action will be taken in the next couple of weeks. There's a possibility that no action will be taken at all on that, but I don't want to make that promise to you. Okay, does that help you at all?
Yeah, it's getting everybody back.
Yes, sir. And, you know, you might want to talk to a lot of people that were in the work session because it was discussed at long length. Yes, sir?
Paul Rip, 229-85 High Ridge Road. First of all, I back up on the agenda number five. I commend the council for that. I've been four councils, 16 years watching this. I haven't seen that motion come up like that before, to get in front of some of these lawsuits. That's what we need to do. Now, I had a brief conversation with Jay, and I know you can't settle them all, and I know you don't want to get a reputation of saying, oh, well, they'll settle it, take them to court. But in the past, there's been no effort whatsoever to get in the middle of them, and I think that's cost us a tremendous amount of money. The Boy Scout asked you guys, what was your number one problem that you faced? I'll tell you what I see it is, after this many councils. Who has the power? The mayor of the council. That has been the argument for 16 years. I'll tell you who's got the power. Who's got the power is the people. Because of the first two councils, there's nobody here anymore. They all got voted out, and we saw what happened the last time. The major thing is that there's some sort of cooperation between the council and the mayor, and that there's some sort of cohesiveness that has not been there. It has not been there in the past. Hopefully, that's what we're going to see. The other thing is, you cannot do business with elected officials. If somebody is an elected official, if they're appointed on a board, or they're appointed by the council or the mayor, and they're bidding on work that they themselves are going to come out on top of, they should not be, it should never even get to the agenda. It should never even be discussed. It should be killed in the back room before it ever comes up. Every time it happens, you have problems. That would be one thing that I would look at. The other thing that I think's been abused in the last many years is adding to the agenda. Last-minute addition to the agenda, not on the printed agenda. You walk in and all of a sudden something's added. That doesn't give the public any chance to be participants with what is going on. We want to know what's going on, and we're depending on the printed agenda. We don't want to see something slipped in, and then something happens, goes down the road, and everybody's complaining about it. Planning and zoning, as you know, has been the number one problem. Planning and zoning has been the problem for lawsuits in the beginning. You've got new members going on, you've got, I think, a lot better attitude going into it, looking at these cases, but planning and zoning is the number one financial problem that we have had. So I hope that you're really going to pay attention to that, because I just can't even begin to tell you how much of a problem it has been. Years ago, they dismissed public participation unless it was an agenda item. It should be added back again. You shouldn't be afraid to hear somebody get up and complain or ask questions. Knocking it out and not allowing people to talk is what causes the problem. Public participation should be added. I hope the best for you guys, I really do. You know I'll be watching, so good luck, and if there's anything I can do to make things better, I will. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Rip. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
This is Ed Hall, I live in, on Dove Lane, just outside of Fairhope. My question is, the airport authority was talking about phase two and phase three a while ago. For years now, and Dan's still here, I don't know if he's here, he's already left, we tried to get a loop fire system in at the airport coming off of McGowan Drive. Now they're talking about putting another gate on 32. 32, we don't even have a fire hydrant there for the airport. Something I think they need to look into when they're starting putting these other structures in out there, because if the loop system will give us more water supply out there. Right now, we're standing at about 51, what they call, static pressure. All right, that's not a whole lot of pressure.
51?
Yes, 51 to 53, last time I checked it out there. That's on a dead-end main now. That's a dead-end main. So we're starting building all these structures. Bishop Road on the south side of that, just to the gate to get into the airport's a thousand-foot. There is a hydrant there, but you've got a thousand-foot of holes to put on the ground before you even get to the airport. So we need to look into that, we start building all these structures out there.
Mr. McInerney?
I agree, we need to build even on these sides. We're building millions of dollars of structures out there. We don't have the stewardship.
Is that in the grant application?
Not in our grant, FAA doesn't approve that. That's like, you know, like a commercial development does that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Jack, can I?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Say something? I might say two things. First off, I'd like to, I'd like the winners of the recycling art contest to stand up and be recognized. And then I'd like to recognize Fairhope Elementary School on their Veterans Day program that I attended on Thursday. It was very well-attended, and they did a wonderful job. I think all of this, I know all the second grade, it might have been second and third grade, but they did a great job.
What are you guys doing here? Okay. You scared me. All right, anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close public participation and entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, we're adjourned, thank you.